We're happy and excited that we have people coming to our board meetings. So, first up, Mr. Hoffman with our technology report.
Well, mine's short and sweet. Sorry. Mine's short and sweet. By the time we get to November in the school year, usually most things are moving smoothly ahead and there's usually no major issues. Happy to report that is the case this year. Fall testing is done for the state and again, there was no major issues. Mostly little, small stuff that happened, onesie twosie kinds of things. This weekend, if you guys attended the school play, it was the second time we've used digital backdrops and I was involved a little bit in that project and I have been told it went off very well.
It looked great.
It did.
Actually, he built the backdrop, so he was a little then-
I didn't do the digital part, just the physical with a couple of other people on staff.
I've heard nothing but good about it.
That's good. Wonderful. So, no other major concerns? Questions, comments, issues?
You can report back to Mr. Schaefer that I took my iPad quickly during Capital Conference and loved it.
I was nice being there.
It was so nice to have all the conference handouts and everything available and it was wonderful.
You guys enjoying the pencils as well?
Yes.
Those are very nice.
Very nice.
Very good.
All right. Thank you. We're just gonna move right on down the line.
On Monday, November 1st, Jane Myers, our ESC consultant, led a data dive for our third grade and fourth grade teachers. During their three-hour block, our teachers became more familiar with the state testing blueprints. We also learned what proficient really means on that state test and how to develop effective assessments. So, our teachers provided a lot of positive feedback after that time together. It gave us some time to have some conversations as well. We had our first principal's math club on Friday. Just posted it on Facebook if you want to see them dance away. We had sixty-two excited new little members. We also had our first elementary house assembly on Friday, so congratulations to fourth-grade student Kayla Wonderly for being chosen as this month's East Central Ace.
The middle school hosted its local spelling bee today. Congratulations to Jordis Vance, our middle school spelling bee champion, and Hannah Ridgeway, our runner-up. They both earned the right to compete at the Defiance County Spelling Bee at 7:00 PM on January 18th at Ayresville. Mrs. Deal and her community class have continued to contribute awesome things to our community. One of their latest projects was a Veterans Day gift. They worked as a team and created gifts to hand out to each and every veteran that attended the assembly. It was pretty neat. Our fifth-grade intervention specialist, Ms. Stockman, has been a great addition to our HMS staff. She has fit in well with our fifth-grade team and she's working really hard to build relationships needed for co-teaching with our regular ed teachers. Ms. Stockman has also been doing great things with her life skills class as well. Recently, she taught the students how to make pizza and then use the pizzas to teach a fraction lesson. It was pretty neat. The kids absolutely loved it. Our middle school winter sports are also in full swing. We're still looking for more seventh and eighth-grade wrestlers. So, any junior high student who is interested in wrestling, please contact Mr. Moore. He'd love to have more numbers.
And we have that wonderful dedicated space for our wrestlers.
Oh, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, that's great. Right, Mr. Slattery.
All right. So, first off, I wanted to congratulate our ladies volleyball team for being district runner-ups this year. So, it was an exciting season, a lot of wins this year, and it was a lot of fun watching those ladies play. So, again, congratulations. On October 28th, our staff hosted a crisis prevention intervention refresher course. The principals selected a group of teachers to represent all grade bands in different areas of the building. This CPI training, as it's called, is pretty much for students that maybe at times that become a little bit too, I'm gonna say overly aggressive in the classroom and we have to take the time and be trained well enough to go in there and handle those students appropriately. That way, there's no harm to the student or of course, to the staff. On October 29th, the first quarter came to an end, which is just amazing to me that we're already, what, three weeks into the second quarter, you know, with Thanksgiving break right around the corner. On November 4th, the innovative interview started a new chapter under the direction of Mr. Josh Fries. This was a program that was initially started with Mrs. Leone. I will say that Mr. Fries has put his own touch on the competition. He actually took it to a whole new level. The organization that he's used to, you know, to put this together, again, the community support that we have in this program, we appreciate everyone who volunteered their time to participate in the interview process. And then, of course, the second round ended up at Defiance College. And the competition, again, like I said about Mr. Josh Fries, he took it to a whole new level where the students from Hicksville, there were nine of them who qualified, ended up at Defiance College and with the Defiance College admission team and recruiting team, they did the second round of the interviews. And at that point, they selected three finalists. They are Tristoban, Delaney Begley, and Olivia Clark. So, congratulations to those three ladies and they will compete against the finalists from Semester Two of the financial management class later in the spring. So, congratulations and we're looking forward to seeing the finals there. The Veterans Day Assembly was a success this year on November 11th. And again, we appreciate the efforts of all the staff members involved and a special shout-out to Kirsten, of course, because I know that there are certain things that Mr. Country and myself and Mike are not good at and Kirsten comes out and helps us develop a great program that is not only enjoyable but aesthetically pleasing, right? Right? It looked very nice. And then, of course, thank you again to all of our local veterans. Two more items. Item number one, college credit plus information. That meeting was last Wednesday, which was advertised to our school district and our students. The Defiance County counselors actually put on a session where everyone's involved or allowed to attend. Again, this took place last Wednesday. If you were not able to attend that meeting, you just need to make sure to contact your high school office and talk to your counselor or principal and we'll, of course, get you going in the right direction to complete the intent to participate form in order to participate in CCP courses. Last and not least, fall testing on the high school side. That will be in December, so if you hear any students talking about fall testing, that is not entire grade bands. That is individual students who are looking to increase their subgroup scores or their overall scores for graduation. And we're talking about graduation, I'm gonna call it 4.0. We're a part of graduation 5.0 now. So, the graduation requirements for the last few years have changed each and every year for each graduating class. If you have any questions about how your student is supposed to graduate or what requirements they have, again, please contact high school office.
Kirsten, every year you quarterback the vet program and on Veterans Day, and I always hear wonderful things about it. So, thank you for doing that.
I know the veterans I know were very appreciative. They enjoyed it.
Okay. I do not have a four-county report, so we'll move on to the superintendents.
Yes. First, I'd like to extend congratulations to Eric Better. He will be our newest board member starting in January, so we're looking forward to working with you, Eric. Capital Conference was November 7th and 9th and I know, I think the girls might be mentioning that later, but I'm gonna mention my part now, that one of the highlights in the session at the conference for me was a presentation by, actually, it was done by Napoleon Schools on mental health, district mental health plan. And their guidance counselors and superintendent presented it. They had several ideas that I think would be really useful for us here at the school. I spoke to them already about their session and planned to get our counselors in contact with them so that we can utilize some of the ideas and stuff that they had and perhaps get them implemented here at Hicksville to help our students deal with mental health awareness and our teachers as well. They stole my thunder on the veterans program, which I knew they would, but just to kind of piggyback on that, Kirsten is the one that has the leadership role in that and we're really appreciative of that. She always makes us three guides look pretty good. And it was very, very, very nice. And the students that were involved, well, everyone was involved. They did a great job. The choir, the band, they did an outstanding job. And a lot of our kids greeted the vets as they came in. And then, what was really touching at the end is they all created this tunnel that started from the main gym all the way down Main Street, out the doors and clear out into the parking lot. And the little kids were all singing as they left, so it was pretty touching. So, they were pretty impressed with that. I received a lot of positive comments from the vets on that. I continue to send out the COVID notification. Each week on Fridays, I still meet with the county nurse and the other superintendents in the county in regards to the COVID situation. Our numbers here at the school remain pretty consistent from week to week. I think five is the most that I've ever reported in one week. Typically, it's around two cases that are reported. I'm happy that our students are all in-house and I'm very confident that we'll remain that way for the rest of the year, right here, with face-to-face instruction. I will say, though, that the flu is starting to hit us pretty good, as it is, I think, everywhere. So, I encourage parents to, you know, if your kids are sick, please keep them home, especially if they're running a fever, throwing up. Please keep them home because that's gonna help with that as well, to reduce those numbers. And obviously, hand washing is the best defense for all of those things, COVID and the flu, so encourage that. And that's my report.
I would just like to say, I also bragged on Mrs. Stockman down at Capital Conference and our veterans program with them down there. So, I gave her some information so she can help share our veterans program because we do an awesome job of that. We do, so. Okay, we're gonna move on to minutes and financials. Mike, I'm gonna need help on E because I don't have the five-year forecast as per the number there.
The number?
Yeah.
One million, eight forty-three, four hundred.
Need a motion for minutes and financials.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Linda, thank you. I'm sorry, I have a cold, so. Minutes from the regular board meeting on October 18th, '21, and a work session meeting on October 18th, '21. The treasures consent agenda items, we have the cash reconciliation as of October 31st, '21. Financial statements for October 21. Approved amended certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year '22 as presented in total general fund resources of fifteen million, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand and twenty dollars and forty-four cents. And total resources for all funds of twenty-one million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and forty-four cents. Approved the amended fiscal year '22 permanent appropriations as presented, total general fund appropriations of eleven million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and forty-seven cents. And total appropriations for all funds of fourteen million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. And approved the fiscal year '22 five-year forecast as presented, cash balance as of June 30th, 2026, which is line 7.020, of one million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. Accept the following donations of one hundred and thirteen dollars and four cents from Betty Guilford for STEM, five hundred dollars from the Ohio State Eagles Charity Fund for Suda of the Quarter, and twelve volleyballs from Adam and Rebecca Zedig for volleyball. Mike, I would like to say, I like the new reports.
Okay.
They're easy to read.
Good. I'd like to talk about the forecast a little bit. This is the first forecast since the adoption of House Bill 110, which is the state of Ohio's biennium budget that was passed effective July 1st. So, it's for the 2022 and the 2023 year. There are some major changes to the methodology of public school funding in the budget primarily due to the budget adopting what's called the Fair School Funding Plan. Or at least, the first two years of the six years, the Fair School Funding Plan was developed or worked through by State Representatives John Peterson and Robert Cupp, along with school practitioners, which were superintendents and treasurers throughout the state of Ohio. That was a three-year effort to try to put together a constitutionally-approved school funding plan, a thorough and efficient one, as our school funding was declared unconstitutional four different times. If you recall, the DeRofe case, so 1997, 2000, 2001, 2022. So, that was the motivation behind the Fair School Funding Plan. With that said, on the forecast itself, the most visible change you will see on that is the money now follows the student rather than through the resident district. And examples of that is on line 1.060, which is all other revenues. On this forecast, from 2021 to 2022, that line item decreased by over six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. That in large part was due to the open enrollment dollars for students coming to our district not being reported by us anymore. So, that number decreased greatly. It is offset somewhat and I'll get to that in a little bit. But we are also funded directly for the students that enroll back into us and that's part of the line 1.035, the unrestricted grants and aid, which is basically our school foundation. Unfortunately, our numbers there are down. We came in at eight hundred and sixty-six funded students for this year at the moment. Two years ago was nine-ten. Last year with COVID, with the way a lot of things played out, our enrollment decreased. That was very common throughout the state of Ohio. Enrollment went down to eight-sixty, so bumped slightly up to eight-sixty-six. It's my understanding, it's a little bit unusual because it sounds like a lot of districts throughout the state have jumped up close to where they were two years ago. So, I'm not sure why we haven't seen that bump, but maybe it's to come yet. The, as far as the school foundation dollars too, we don't, haven't got the exact amount or the set amount that we're gonna receive yet. So, when the new biennium budgets come, how department education has to reprogram how they enter everything into the system. Well, with the new Fair School Funding Plan, the job was much bigger than it has been in the past. So, we still don't know exactly what we are supposed to get yet for this fiscal year. The state has said that they expect that they will have those dollars available in December. So, that could have an effect on line 1.035 and 1.040. I'm hoping to the positive. We should see here probably within a few weeks. So, as I mentioned a little bit, on the flip side of the open enrollment students, the dollars coming in was changed. The tuition for students going out is no longer going to be an expenditure for the district either. So, that is a line, purchase services, that last year was about two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So, that two hundred and fifty-eight thousand will no longer be an expenditure for our district. Not as much as the four-fifty-nine, but then again, too, some of those students that are coming in are still gonna be part of that line 1.035, unrestricted grants and aid. Line 1.040, which is restricted state grants and aid, has increased quite a bit. And a large portion of that is the Student Wellness and Success Funds that started in the last biennium budget. When that first began, it was in Fund 467, a separate fund, a state fund. With this new House bill, that money now is part of the general fund. It's a restricted general fund dollar amount. So, we're expecting just shy of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of Student Wellness Success Funds in fiscal year '22. So, that was a large portion of that increase that you will see on line 1.040. Going up a little bit into the forecast, line 1.0 and 1.050, these are for property tax and property tax allocation or rollback in homestead dollars. And you'll see, and it's pretty even throughout, except there's a little bit of a bump in 2024 and 2025, and that is Defiance County, every six years, there's a reappraisal of property values. So, in 2023 is Defiance County's next time through. And so, there's a projected bump in there a little bit to see revenues increase for those two years. Other than that, that line item's pretty flat. Also, you will see on line 1.030, which is the income tax, that starts to decrease in fiscal year '24 and '25. The reason is because we cannot in the forecast assume that the school district income tax levy will be renewed. So, the amounts associated with what would be falling off are being taken out of that lineup there in 1.030 and being added to line 11.010, income tax renewal. So, if you, for example, looking at line 7.020, the cash balance, you see that amount. If you go down farther, you will see the impact of the levy if it's renewed. And so, that is more of what you would expect with the consideration that the levy does. So, obviously, that's not something that's on the board's table now and will be addressed in due time. You will see a fifty thousand dollar transfer in there and that essentially is just moving the money from the regular general fund to the school bus general fund. So, that fifty thousand dollar transfer that you guys have asked to have done in order to make sure we stay on top of our bus fleet. On the expenditure side of the forecast, line 3.010 is the personal services or wages and benefits. The projected, as you know, the current contract expires at the end of this school year and therefore, in this forecast, it's projected 2.5% raises. That is just merely a projection to see how things play out in the forecast, but that is also the past amount, so I've kinda just took that and continued with that throughout the forecast. Also affecting this line is ESAR monies. We've got people currently on ESAR that will be falling off, so instead of coming out of the general fund, they're currently coming out of an ESAR federal grant fund during this forecast. At some point in time, some of those people will be falling off of there and going back to the general fund. We also have a projection on here of somebody going on here in '23 and '24 and then falling off back to the general fund. So, there's a little bit of moving around on this due to that. Also, the Student Wellness and Success Funds that I previously mentioned that had been coming out of Fund 467, some of that will now roll back into the general fund. The next line down is insurances and other benefits such as retirement, workers' comp, et cetera. And we have already know that we're gonna have an eight percent medical increase effective January of this coming year, 2022. So, zero percent in all the other insurances for dental, vision, and life. So, that part's good. In the forecast, total insurance increases, I forecasted that 6.0% annually. And of course, the other benefits tied into retirement will pretty well mirror the increases that happened with payroll. Line 3.040, whoops, I'm sorry, line 3.030, purchase services, and you will see that one drop about two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars from last year to this year. And again, that's primarily due to those tuition costs, open enrollment, community school, and autism scholarships that go out. Those expenditures will no longer run through our district. 3.040, materials and supplies, pretty much just a 3% increase throughout the forecast other than this first year, there is a little bit more of a bump and large part due to the new complex. There will be some additional supplies associated with that. Capital outlay, the next line, it's kind of up and down and that has to do with the bus, the expectation of a bus purchase every other year. The twenty, there's, of the money being transferred out in fiscal year 2022 is seventy thousand dollars. Fifty for the bus, but there's also, I've set aside twenty thousand dollars for the lunchroom fund. Last year was a little over fifteen thousand. This year, we're on a better, we're on a better pace. Our revenues have been better, costs have risen, food supplies and so forth. And also, I know the cafeteria's having a heck of a time of getting some food in. I know they're working their tails off to make sure that Gordons and wherever they have to go to get food is done. But, so I got twenty thousand billed in there, but I'm hopeful, when it comes to the end of the year, that that transfer will not need to be done. So, we'll obviously see where things go and how they play out as the year continues to move on. So, that's kind of a rundown for you, a little history of the change in the formula and some items throughout. You all should have received a one-page forecast and then about 22 pages, which has notes and much other information associated to it. Anybody have any questions?
The new funding, have they appealed that already? Did I hear that once it got passed, the current funding, the Ohio State funding that was, they said was unconstitutional several times, did they, once that got passed, did they appeal that already?
Appealed that constitutional ruling of the DeRofe?
Yes.
I don't know that. I haven't heard. Was it something maybe talked about at the conference?
I can't remember. I was thinking that they were saying that, yes, we have this new plan, but it wasn't. Like, somebody was objecting to it already on another.
Another, well, they were wanting, it was, to me, it was a little frustrating from sitting as a treasurer. Like I said, there were two representatives and a number of superintendents and treasurers throughout the state that worked for three years and trying to develop something that would be efficient, thorough and efficient for public funding, school funding. And there was also on the flip side, a senator that came in basically in the last hour that wanted a plan. And fortunate thing is, is this Fair School Funding Plan did, was adopted in House Bill 110. The unfortunate part of it is it is designed to be phased in over six years and there would be increases in funding over that six-year period. But they only approved it for the first two years. So, a little bit maybe along those lines. It is not set in stone yet for the six-year period.
Just drew, I had a question about the student enrollment piece. You mentioned that we have it bumped back up. Is that number, is that on-campus only students? Because I know the number of students that we have on-campus has increased. We have a very large percentage of juniors and seniors that are at four-county career center. The number of kids that are doing CCP most of the day. We have students in the Brian Autism Center, the IEC, that's increased.
This is a number that is used for school funding. So, there's all kinds of numbers that the state presents for funding and for enrollment and report card purposes and EMIS and all that stuff. So, this is also information I got through Forecast Five Analytics, which is a company that has designed programs for five-year forecasts and they go and get information And they go and get information from state agencies through EMIS reporting in this case. And this is the number that they had for us.
Clear as mud.
That's right.
So, so they're actually numbers that Matt puts in. And then they pull those and it gets put into the pie, into the mix.
Mike, thank you for your work. You always do an excellent job, and you're very good at explaining it and knowing everything.
Thank you.
We're very thankful for you. Any other questions for Mike on the forecast before we go back?
Are we allowed to ask questions or not?
We'll wait until at the end of the session.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
You're good. Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes, motion passes by zero. Need a motion first, employment of certified staff?
I'll move.
Galen, thank you.
I'll second.
Craig, thank you. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 21-22 school year. Dave Blue, head girls track coach. Andrew Lawrence, head softball coach. Paul Payne, head boys track coach. Liz Perna, junior class advisor, one-third. Les Perna, prom advisor, one-third. Natalie Zachridge, archery advisor. Cara Meiser, freshman girls basketball coach. Roll call.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Need another motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Sorry, Minda, Galen, thank you. A motion to recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the 21-22 school year. Tim Shaw, head baseball coach. Roll call.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Epstein.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes for, yes, one, Epstein. A motion for employment of class-wide staff?
I'll move.
Craig, thank you.
I'll second.
Galen, thank you. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 21-22 school year. And I'm sorry, how do you say this name?
Ian.
Ian Dewitt, assistant wrestling coach. Jay Souls, head junior high wrestling coach. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the 21-22 school year. Jeff Schroeder, softball and Bailey Tier, boys basketball. Roll call.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes by zero. Need a motion in other business?
I'll move.
Minda, thank you.
I'll second.
Galen, thank you. Recommend to approve a $20 maximum for professional leave meal reimbursement. Recommend to approve $400 stipend for highly qualified student data members beginning with the 21-22 school year. And then we need to set a date first for our '22 organizational board meeting and then a president pro temp. So we need to have the meeting within the first 15 days of January per Ohio revised code. So my first law would be January 10th. And Mike, you'll get a pass if you don't have financials ready that soon for us, but we need to have our organizational meeting by January 15th.
Okay.
So are you guys okay with January 10th, Eric?
Yeah, right now I'm good.
At 5:30.
Census is the 10th, then?
So January 10th at 5:30. And we need to appoint any president pro temp.
Are you willing?
Yeah, I'll do it. I can't appoint myself, so.
Mike did educate us. You can't appoint yourself, but you can vote for yourself. So you don't need to abstain when voting for yourself. It's kind of like an agreement that, yes, I will. Fair enough. Okay, I think that was it for other business. So roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes, motion passes by zero. And for all of you who care to take note, it'll be January 10th for the January meeting. Okay, old business.
I'd like to ask about the opening of the new building.
Yeah, I checked with Eric on that, waiting on the Bob stuff, and it's still not here. We can bypass if you want.
No, we can't.
But we'd have to manually undo stuff. My key doesn't even work, so that tells you anything.
Okay. Crazy, isn't it?
It is crazy.
So many things backed up.
I just wanted to mention, so Minda and I accompanied Keith down to Capitol Conference. And my biggest takeaway, there was actually several different sessions on student speech. So students' rights for free speech. And if anybody's familiar with the student speech, there was a case where a cheerleader had Snapchat and the school unfairly suspended her from junior, JV, I'm sorry, JV cheerleading team. And so it actually went all the way to the Supreme Court and that was ruled on. And so it was very interesting, splitting hairs really on students' free speech. And the biggest takeaway, I think, is, one, and the dissension from the Supreme Court pretty much said that student's speech on the weekends should be ruled or overseen by their parents and not the school. And that schools should be protecting free speech for students and teaching them free speech. So that was kind of interesting. But of course, the big dividing was she was not at the school. It was on the weekend. She was on her own device, not a school device. She was not in any gear that related, you know, cheer uniform, anything that said her school. So that was some of the.
She didn't call anyone out by name. It was just her.
And her intended.
You know, the situation.
Yes, and it was, the intended audience was a small group. And so it was just interesting, some of the different things that they pointed out about it and questioning, okay, well, what if this would have happened? What if she was on her school computer? So it was just very interesting. For me, that was, I attended a couple of students' free speech.
In my current educational law class, they also say if the speech affects your school day, maybe like.
And it's interesting how it, it has to be like, I brought it down somewhere, like greatly disturbing. It can't even be a small disturbance. I mean, it's very specific, like, not that greatly disturbing, it's very specific. But, you know, you had to be able to prove that it was a large disturbance versus just bothering one teacher.
Right, and before your case, it disturbed the health of the classroom by, as they said.
Yes, by silent protest. By people, and if the students even say anything, they just quietly got up and walked out. Yeah, so it was interesting.
I went to that one also, it was interesting. I did another one about poverty, which was very interesting. And one of the suggestions was that for a small community that does Christmas things, that, you know, we care for families and we do things, that they would develop a spreadsheet and that the community as a whole would work on that, rather than some families getting twice and possibly missing someone, but that was, you know, interesting. And then I attended another one about connections with the community. And truly, we're thankful all the time for a community that's involved and attentive to a school and interested. And sitting there listening, I was extremely thankful for our community, extremely. And another one was about goals for a school board. And the guy said have two goals. One of them is education. The second one is the well-being of students and staff, stating that a child cannot learn unless they're well. And teachers and staff cannot do their job unless they're well. And so he, he just felt like that was the two big things. And then that, you know, that you have other goals, but that like each department then takes those two goals and says, how do I fit into those two goals? You know, and then this department takes it and that you work on that through the school. But I thought the conference was very good, so very worthwhile, thank you.
Minda, when you're talking about wellness, did they address the mental health issues as well?
That's, yes, health and wellness, yep, totally. I think that was their biggest part of it. It was interesting, they said, they did it. The poverty thing was about urban poor and rural poverty. And one of them was about bullying. And it said, in rural schools, you have more bullying. Because in urban schools, they just fight it out. It's just aggressive, they take care of it, it's done. But she said in rural communities, the bullying becomes more inward. So that was just an interesting little, you know, it was very, very good.
We actually had a discussion, you said, and I did about, like, you know, I said, I felt like we were, we were meaner to each other to our faces, which takes a lot of guts back in the day. And I'm proud of some of the things that some of my classmates did and myself maybe. But the kids today, with the social media side of things, they don't want to approach each other and find a resolution to that conflict. But it's a 24/7, 365, you know, social media never skated. Where you have one event that comes to a climax and it's over, you can move on. Where the social media piece, if they just hide behind it, it just goes on and on and on for days, for weeks, for months sometimes. And it's very impactful on them as well.
I had, I had an item that I wanted to mention. I talked to the board before about this, but I want you to think about a possible special ed type position, like a special ed director type position. What I'm looking at establishing is, and I'm not sure if I want to call it a special ed director or a student services director position. But with the percentage of special ed students that we have, this position would be a great asset to our district. I know a lot of other schools have started getting their own special ed directors, curriculum directors because of the, a lot of it is because of the mandates and the requirements that are required by the state. It's overwhelming for the administrators to get all of that done. So this would be a huge benefit for them and also for our school psychologists. So I'm in the process right now of gathering some information from other districts on job description, wages, what that, what that would look like. And then, like I said, I just believe that our, our district is in need of this position and that our students would benefit greatly as well as, as the three administrators for sure and our psychologists. But the students would also benefit. So if you could give us some thoughts.
Are you thinking for next school year?
I'm thinking for the '22-23 school year, yes.
And would they come in before, would there be some summer days, I mean, especially?
There would, it would be a longer condrick than 183 days like the teachers, but not excessive, like maybe 192. I think it's kind of what we've been seeing at other schools, 193 in that area.
And are you looking for someone with an administrative license?
It would be an administrative position, yes.
But it would not have to have an administrative license?
Uh, no.
No, so someone that is, like, has a lot of experience in special ed, if that's the way you go, that's what you're looking for more?
But if, if, yes. I don't have anybody in mind yet, so.
I do believe, though, like, if it deals with, like, some type of supervision of special ed, do you gain your degree wishes is an administrative license?
Right, but we're still outlining the position. So if we included that piece, then yes, it would have to be an administrative.
I just wanted to know because there's a difference.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Any other comments?
Like evaluation piece would obviously require administrations.
We have come to the part of our agenda where we do allow guests to speak. So I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Please let me remind you, and this is very specific, anyone who plans to speak, you are not allowed to use any student or staff member's name and that you're limited to four minutes. We ask, there's a mic over here on the corner, if you would step up to that to talk. And please, there's a sheet of paper to sign in, and please state your name for the record. So if there's anybody who would like to speak now, is your time.
You still have to turn the mic.
Thank you.
Last call.
I do have something to say, but I'm editing my verbiage.
Okay.
I don't mention names.
Hello, my name is Michael Valena. I am Michael Valena's father. We had met with the board at the last meeting in executive session. And the reason for that meeting was that we feel our son was berated, emotionally abused, and verbally abused in a meeting he had with a guidance counselor here at school. Our son had, our son, Michael, had to forethought to audio record his evening with the guidance counselor question because of the horror stories he had heard from others. We had went through the chain of command and shared the recording with the administration and at the last board meeting with the Board of Education. And if anyone else would like to hear the recording, we could play it at this time. No, okay. What we would like to see is, we would like to see this guidance counselor suspended or placed on a leave of absence until the Board of Education and the administration can look into these ethical violations further and file our complaint with the Ohio School Board Association attorneys. We realize this would take some time to figure out. We need to consider what is best for our students. We also feel that the teacher that was in the meeting should be suspended or placed on leave for her in that irresponsible, irresponsibility and involvement in emotionally abusing Michael. This is in the best interest of our students' welfare. Michael is not the first student to be verbally and emotionally abused by this guidance counselor, but we want him to be the last. One closing remark is, we, we received many messages from parents of students, community members, community business owners thanking us for standing in for our son, which is hard to believe. What started out as a voice for our son has turned into a voice for many that have been mistreated by this person, the guidance counselor.
Thank you.
I am Shannon Valena, Michael's mother. On behalf of my family, we just want to extend a thank you to those that came out to support us this evening. We really appreciate it and ultimately this cause for not only our son, but for so many people. And as Mike had mentioned, we received a lot of support. I'm sorry, I'm very emotional about this, it's been a long two months. We've gotten a lot of comments, and if we have time, I would really. We've gotten a lot of comments and if we have time, I would really love to share especially Because it's really unbelievable what we've heard and what's happened. And we know firsthand we're able to do this because like Mike said, Michael had the forethought because of all the comments he heard from other kids that had a very negative experience with the guidance counselor, that he had the forethought to record the event. So, without that, it was extremely unbelievable what we heard. It was 15 minutes and it was just really gut-wrenching. And my family, my mom's here, and we've heard this recording. And quite honestly, I took notes the first time I heard it. And one of the comments that I wrote down was, um, sorry. If it was a student other than Michael that didn't have a support system, I could see them wanting to commit suicide. And my family member, one of them that heard this, and my mom's a witness, shared, "Oh my gosh, if I was that student, I would want to go kill myself." And this is not an exaggeration. And my mom can witness, she's a witness to that. And I said, "I'm going to go grab my notes and I'm showing you what I wrote down when I listened to this." And it was her exact words. So, we just want to thank everyone for their support. I know that this guidance counselor has a lot of complaints, a very, I can't imagine how many file cabinets it probably takes for all the complaints that have been against him. Because I've had someone as long as 20 years back tell me that this happened to their child. My question, I'm going to read one and I'll end with one story that someone sent me. But I guess my question is, when is enough? When will this treatment stop? And I feel it's in the best interest of our students that this guidance counselor is asked, asked to part ways with Hicksville schools. I am going to read just one comment that was sent to me. "The amount of time that the guidance counselor has been being disrespectful and downright rude to my students is endless. Unfortunately, mine are scared to death to have their dad go into the school for fear that it will only get worse when they have to be in school during the day. The teachers' union will protect him. It's sad but true. Sorry to hear this about your son. I was at the game. I saw the kids not wearing masks. But they must have to have the correct last name and not be getting, the correct last name and not be getting reprimanded. I could list them all." It ends with, "I was told that her student was an idiot, a stupid idiot."
Thank you, Shannon. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board?
My name is Sue Hoffman. And I am Michael's grandmother.
Can you tilt the microphone down towards you?
A high school guidance counselor's responsibility is to project an image of positivity and uniqueness in each and every student he has communication with. Not demeaning, ridiculing, and name-calling students the way this counselor got away with. And I, and I heard the tape also. After listening to the taped conversation of this counselor and the student, his calling names and bullying, I can't even imagine being on the school board and allowing this counselor to keep his position. So, more students will have to endure his mental abuse. It sounds like there are quite a few stories similar to this student's of his misguided from the past. Are you going to allow this man to continue tarnishing the reputation of Hicksville High? What a beautiful, what's a beautiful school if the students fear the one person they are to respect and admire for his common sense and input into their future endeavors. In closing, this student is an outstanding son and grandson, but most importantly, a human being. Do the right thing and don't allow this man to manipulate and mentally abuse other students in the future with his unethical practices.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sean Falls. And I'm live from Hicksville. This is my first time here.
Welcome.
Thank you. My life is directed by Shannon and I can talk with her. And I couldn't help but not be here. After what's going on in Allen County, my school district, I see things that are corrupt and just downright evil. And people have got to speak up in this country for our students, for ethics and morals and the right thing to do. And if this counselor truly is doing these things, and I don't know all the background, I know what I hear and I believe it. And I see the emotion back there coming with it. And you guys got to do something. I mean, you got to investigate, you got to figure out what's going on. If this guy really is doing this stuff. And ma'am, and Ms. Jones, you spoke about the conference you went to, the well-being of the students. This young man, that he's not doing well. This guy be rectified. And you all know that. And I don't know you guys, but I trust that you want to do the right thing for the student. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here on the board. So, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm Becky Gregory, and I had no intention of doing this, but I also heard the video, I mean, the audio. And I've known Michael since he was born. And I could not imagine, I was absolutely feeling sick hearing what was, how they spoke to him. And I know what an amazing kid he is. Respectful, helpful, he's so intelligent, he's just the most amazing kid. And when I heard how cutting, and it wasn't just about like discipline or anything, it was a cutting to the core of who he was. He might as well have said, "You are a worthless human being because of this event." And he, he knew him that he's never had any background or any problems. He knew who he was. And I'm telling you, if, I was so appalled. The whole day was, I could hardly go through the day because I imagining myself, and if anybody would have ever talked to me like that, I, I truly, I would, it, for coming from an adult like that to a student, he had to feel absolutely worthless. And thank heavens, I know that the only reason Michael has been able to endure this is because we all love him and we're going to stand up and fight for him. Because no child, let alone an adult, should ever be put in a position like he was put in. And if you listen to the audio, I know that you will be stick to your stomach too. And if you could ever imagine your child being talked to like that, I mean, I would, if my child was ever talked to like that, I'm telling you, I'm not a violent person, but it made me feel very violent.
My name is Lina Mendoza. And my son was at the same little incident with Michael. And my only issue and problem, my big issue and problem was that they discuss, you know, adults were reprimanding and discussing punishments with our children without once even giving us a call, a text, or anything. They decided they were guilty as charged and didn't bother to include us. I wasn't, I didn't get a call, I didn't get a text from anybody from the school. And I just don't agree with, not even a guidance counselor, I don't agree, I don't agree with any, any guidance counselor, teacher, coach ever bullying a child or calling them names or making them feel that low in any situation. Being from this school. I don't agree with it. And I know you're supposed to be tough and you're teaching our children to be strong. But, you know, belittling your children is not how you're going to make them into great, responsible human beings and adults. That, my big issue was, they're not 18 years old, they're still our children and we're responsible for them, so we should have had a call. We should have had a call, a text, or something. I, I don't agree when my child does something wrong, I think he should be, you know, he should suffer consequences. But I also think that we should have been involved from the very start from that meeting. And he was, my son was in it too. And he was also threatened with taking away certain privileges that he had earned. And I don't think that was right without a call or a text to their parents, to me. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janelle Myers. My husband John.
You're going to have to move up to the microphone. You're very quiet.
Sorry, I'm nervous. I don't like public speaking. My name is Janelle Myers. My husband John wanted to be here, but he got held up at work. His big takeaway from this was that this happened September 23rd. And the, the incident, when did it happen? When did he talk to him? But it just seems like we're still here. I mean, he's just a kid. We should have moved on from this. Everybody makes mistakes. And my son, John, sorry, my son was also with Michael at that incident. Said Michael acted nothing but respectful and he hadn't, he was shocked that it had escalated to this matter. But what bothers me the most is the National Honor Society and the Student Council thing. Because I have an elder son who's already graduated and in his grade, and you can all look, look at the athletic suspensions. There's numerous athletic suspensions that happen because of alcohol. And those kids were still permitted on student council and on National Honor Society. When did not wearing a mask, right, be worse than the failing of a drug test and the alcohol? That's my big takeaway, Michael. You got a lot of people behind you.
Thank you.
I'm from Northwest Allen County. You guys here have a very big opportunity to rectify situations. We're a very divided county right now.
Sorry.
It's very sad because our board, our superintendent, did not do the correct thing when they had an opportunity. You guys have children in your care. You need to do the right things to make sure they're secure, the parents feel that they're safe in your care throughout the days. When you do not do that and you let teacher unions and others dictate how your staff can treat them, parents no longer feel that. If you call Northwest Allen, they have had many kids pulled and they're getting homeschooled now. It is sad how divided our county is. You guys can do the correct thing. To see this young man cry and be so upset, you know something happened. And these parents, they should not have to see their kid like this. It is so heartbreaking. And you as a board should want to get to the bottom of this. And till it's done, this guy should be on leave until it's to the bottom of it. Because for him to have to go to school and see this gentleman every day, that is not a conducive thing. I mean, that's repulsive to have to put him in that situation as a young man. I hope you guys decide to do the right thing and you actually get to the bottom of it. You guys are adults and you need to set the example for him.
Thank you.
I'm Karen Gordon. I've never failed to stay up for my brother, so, so I'm not going to stop now. I know that if I got really mad and feel strongly about this, he would not have known of it because he's not someone who makes a big deal out of something little. I knew when he came home that he wanted to do something about this, that is a big deal. So, that's why we're all here, like, that's why all these people are here today is to support him. And you guys will all look at the audio. And if you're not moved in some way by the audio, then I'm not sure how. But the truth is that my brother did the same, I know it's not the first. I hope this will be the last, but if you guys don't do something about it, it won't be the last. I know personally, I was scared to go to him for college, for advice, because I've heard multiple people say that he veered them away from a certain profession because they were too dumb or were over to go over there because they didn't think that they could do it. And honestly, I didn't even go to talk to him about my decision because I was scared that the same thing would happen to me. So, I was honestly surprised when he supported me in that decision, which is sad to say, but it's the truth. So, just seeing my brother like emotional about this, he's not an emotional person. So, that's how I know something's wrong. And I want to ask you guys to please take all this into consideration and do something about this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I want to, we appreciate the public attendance and the participation. We are investigating this. At the same time though, we have to follow discipline regulations. Due process, collective bargaining agreement, and even the Ohio State law. Discipline matters in a public school is not a simple issue, it's not a simple matter. We want you to know that we have heard your issues and we will be discussing them with our attorney to help us guide our next steps. Discipline issues unfortunately will be discussed in executive session only, we will not discuss them in an open and public meeting. We are not able to update you at this time. Okay? But we do thank everybody for coming and showing their support. We will be going into executive session, let's say at 6:45. And we will not, will not be taking any action after that. And then, our next meeting of the board will be December 20th at 5:30. And then our next meeting of the board will be December 20th at 5:30. So I need a motion to go into executive session. Need roll call?
Mrs. Jones? Mrs. Mazzer? Mr. Ayden?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. I've been sorry, I didn't state, we are going into executive session for number one to consider employment, appointment, dismissal, or disciplinary actions.